...of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board member Alba?
Here.
Board member Lisa Body?
Here.
Board member Boy?
Here.
Board member Storm?
Here.
So we're here today to conduct a public hearing on two different issues, two separate issues. The first public hearing, the first portion of the public hearing will be to hear those who are against exceeding the tax cap. Through like the explanation, the town is going to have to exceed the tax cap, which is 2% in New York State, you have to adopt the law. The taxes are going up about 7%, most of it due to salary increases because of minimum wage hikes that are being forced on us by the state, as well as increases for healthcare and retirement costs. We also have an anomaly with payroll this coming year. We do a bi-weekly payroll, which usually gives us 26 pay periods. Next year, there's going to be 27 pay periods in the year. So a payroll is generally about $45,000. So without any raises or increases to anybody's salary, we are already $45,000 up on what we need to raise for taxes. Additionally, what we're doing is people that have been here for quite some time, some of these employees have been here, they go longest-term employees, 26 years. Some of these folks are not even making the $15 minimum wage that is proposed by the state that we're going to have to meet. So these people are making $11, $12 an hour currently, so we're only raising them about 40 or 50 cents instead of 70 cents that the minimum wage is going to increase this coming year. Those increases read in the budget lines as like a 5, anywhere from a 5 to a 8% increase on those lines for salaries for the employees. Again, it's just what we feel is fair for those employees. Outside of those employees raises, we do have small raises for the elected officials. Myself and Joyce up $500, and I think the justices are going up $250 apiece, as well as the assessors are going up $1,000. So those are minimal raises, they're like 1% on each of the elected salaries. Additionally, we have, I believe, I got the budget here, but I think it's a 15% increase in the healthcare costs, which raises us about $15,000, and then we have another 20 or so thousand dollars that were going up in retirement costs. So these are things that are beyond our control. We're trying our best to keep them at bay. We have implemented different systems for employee deductions, or how they contribute to the healthcare system, which is slowly through amortization of employees as people retire. We have new employees, they're participating more, paying more for their healthcare. And outside of that, revenues are pretty steady. The other revenues in the budget are steady, and we're going to have to exceed the tax cap again. So we have to adopt a law in order to exceed the tax cap. We've done this last year. Previously, the past five years, we have not needed to exceed the tax cap, but this is what the state is putting on us, and we need to pass a law to exceed the tax cap again. I'll remind everybody, this is not a public hearing, it's on the budget itself. This is a public hearing on the law to exceed the tax cap. So we've got, welcome any member of the public to speak. Mr. Calp.
All right, Bob Calp, begin. As a taxpayer, I want to know first off, why you're holding this meeting here today on Monday afternoon at 1:00, when the taxpayers of this town have to be at work and cannot attend this meeting? I would like you to postpone this meeting on this tax rate here increase until you hold a meeting where all the taxpayers of this town can attend the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Any other comments?
Kathy Nolan, Phoenisha. I agree, I think the 1:00 time isn't a great time for these hearings. And I previously had comments about the budget. I want to clarify some of those comments. I do support the salary raises for people who have been working for under minimum wage. And I will hold any further comments on the budget until we have the next hearing on the budget. For the tax cap, I've looked at the budget now that more detail has been provided on the figures, and it looks like there isn't a way to avoid at least a 2% hike. So I would support the motion to ask for the 2% hike in the taxes. And I guess the question is, can we look even further? The highway budget is the biggest source of these increases, it's 11%. And I see that there's been an effort to get expenditures down, but perhaps there could be even more expenditures. I think if we're above 2% and we're a little bit above it, that's a shame. But the further and further you get above it, the higher and higher the tax raise for people, the worse it is, the harder it is. So I appreciate your efforts to bring a budget in under the tax cap, you can't do that, we need the waiver. And I would like every effort to lower the amount of the raise from where it is. Thank you.
You have a comment? Mr. Calp?
I'm Ryan Powers from Chichester. I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I really just wanted to rise today to speak to and affirm everything that Bob Calp said. I think that holding a hearing at this time on a weekday is not an appropriate way to do business. Many of us here are old enough to remember the bad old days of Shandaken Town Government, when process was consistently bad. I think, I'd like to think we're well past those times, but this is not the way to do things. There has to be regular order, whether it's in the Shandaken Town Board or in the United States Congress. So, it's my feelings.
Excuse me? Any other comments? With that, I will address these comments. Mr. Calp, I appreciate what you're saying. First off, the initial meeting, we have to have a special meeting to adopt this law prior to adopting the budget. So we couldn't have it at the same time that we're doing the budget hearing or the budget resolution in November. So we have to do it at some time between then. I asked the board when they chose, when we wanted to do it. We selected a date of this date. I asked what time, we said in the afternoon. Again, this is not a public hearing on the budget, and there was a public hearing on the budget in the evening for taxpayers to come to, as we do every year, it'll be the day after Election Day, where we can hear all the details and what they think of the budget and the increases and so on and so forth. Initially, again, this is really, last year, we did the same thing. We had a, it's just to pass a law to allow us to exceed the tax cap. Now, that's not to say that we're not going to look deeply at the budget and try to figure out ways where we can find savings. And I have to apologize that I didn't address highway budget. Highway budget, the increase there is mostly due to $100,000 drop in the fund balance, or use of the fund balance, which gives a dramatic increase in the highway budget. The reason that's happening is because we're waiting FEMA funds and CHIP funding. CHIPS is basically state funding that we receive in compensation for road payment. The state has changed their repayment system, and that payment of $165,000 may or may not come in prior to the end of the fiscal year. So being fiscally responsible, we have to find a way to offset that if we don't receive those funds. Now again, we're hoping that the FEMA funds will start coming in more diligently. Again, we had a number of bridge projects. Eric, what do we have, five bridge projects this year?
Four bridges.
Four bridges.
Over $3 million.
So over $3 million, which is in excess of what the highway budget is. So you can see, we're waiting on quite a bit of funds coming in. Again, we're hoping by the time we go to budget hearing, we'll be able to maybe replenish that $100,000, or maybe half of it, which would help reduce that tax on the highway side as well. Again, we're going to, we're all taxpayers up here, we're working diligently, but these are the things that are going on. A lot of these are costs out of our control, or just being fiscally responsible for what we, what we have to do here to maintain the town and keep all the services that we want to keep, and keep our quality alive. Thank you all for that. Is there any other public comments on tax cap law? With that, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the local law number one. I'll make that one. Second?
Second.
Your favor?
Cat.
With that, we'll open up the public hearing on the zoning map amendment. Again, this is a zoning map amendment for two parcels in Big Indian along Route 28. There is a proposal for a mountain ropes course to be placed on these parcels. They are zoned, the zoning currently splits the parcels. They are partially zoned R1.5 and R5. You have a number of pieces of information in front of you there. And it is a recommendation that was made to us by the planning board. Mountain ropes course, a commercial recreational facility or activity mountain-related, as it's listed in the zoning code, is allowable in R5, but not allowable in R1.5. So we are simply adjusting the zoning line, the map of the zoning map line, to make the parcels wholly within the R5. So the activities of R1, 5, and R5 are allowable on both these parcels, it's just where they can be located on the parcels themselves. So by making them wholly R5, the activity can take place on the entirety of the parcels. So with that, open up for all the comments. Anique?
I ask that you answer please. A change to parcel zoning is a zoning change. The definition of spot zoning is changing the zoning of a particular parcel to accommodate a business, especially if it is not in keeping with the town's comprehensive plan or neighboring parcels. Spot zoning of isolated parcels is not legal. In reference to the Shandaken Comprehensive Plan, current zoning is consistent along all of the Route 28 corridor. There's a strip of 1.5 zoning that borders Route 28, and then farther away from it is the R5. Every parcel along that corridor has this combination zoning. This proposal seeks to alter only two of the parcels along that line inconsistent with that local zoning, hence a spot zoning, changing the zoning of individual parcels, especially if it differs from neighboring parcels to accommodate an individual's needs or business. Rezoning is not necessary to accommodate a ropes course, which we support. A lot line adjustment to create 1.5 in the R5 parcel could be done easily, but needs to be done by the planning board through their usual process. There are also designations available requiring the application of a special permit, which would not set the harmful precedent of a zoning change. In regards to information for the public, our recent FOIL request could not be filled for 20 business days on this issue, which would put it into late November, when the meeting was today. Apparently, there weren't individual notice sent out to adjacent property owners for consideration of impact to their property. Recommendations from the Ulster County Planning Board or other planning resources have not yet been received. This could set a harmful precedent, allowing individual businesses to alter zoning, not in keeping with the comprehensive plan for their personal needs. We're concerned about a seemingly rushed and non-transparent process for a business proposal that has other solutions available. We respectfully ask that the town board vote no on this proposal, or we ask that the town board send this back to the planning board with zoning enforcement officers, or with recommendations, they choose one of the available alternatives to rezoning before they move forward with a plan that could destabilize the town's zoning. At the very least, we ask the town board to hold this process open in order to notify adjacent property owners, wait for FOIL information to come through, for information from lawyers to be shared with the public, and for recommendations to come back from the Ulster County Planning Board, and for all proper applications and necessary materials to be properly submitted. Thank you for listening and for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Nolan?
I have a question. Can I ask the town clerk, who's "we"?
Excuse me?
She mentioned "we". She handed you information?
What did she mention? With the FOIL?
No, she was, in her statement, she was saying "we", but she didn't identify who she was or who "we" are.
We respectfully ask?
So who's "we"?
Anique, if you want to elaborate on why you use the term "we"?
Oh, well, sometimes I support the Phoenisha neighbors, and I speak for them. And a number of them have been, have been also concerned about those neighbors on my street. I think there are others here today also that support me on that. I've talked to a number of people on the phone. So I'm, you're right, and then I use the official "we", which I probably shouldn't have, but I'm not alone in saying this. Two or three neighbors who couldn't be here today because of lawyers and other things have said they're extremely, I told them what I was doing, and they said, "Thank you, please do it." Does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Ad得住.
Thank you. And I apologize for the words.
Kathy Nolan, Phoenisha, and I'm speaking for myself. I was most concerned about this when Anique came to me and told me that she submitted a FOIL request to obtain documents to understand what this proposal was, and that the response to the FOIL request was that those documents would be provided within 20 days.
Business days.
Business days. And so she did not receive anything, other than a promise to receive some future documents. Now, this is for a public hearing. For a public hearing to have any meaning, the public has to have the documents that describe what's being proposed. These documents were provided today in the actual text of the law, with purposes that are potentially controversial, and with maps that were not provided earlier. So people trying to understand what you were proposing to do had to basically guess from a description that was in the public notice, which is half a sentence, and a newspaper article in the Woodstock Times. The public hearing notice also didn't provide a mechanism to send in comments for people who couldn't be here today at 1:00 on a Monday. No email address and no mailing address saying, "Please send comments to that address." So I agree that we are not at a position where the public could feel at all comfortable moving forward here. I attended the workshop meetings where this proposal was, came forth, and I think it's a very good proposal for the town. But if it requires a zoning change done like this, then it's not good. And when the planning board referred it to you, and you set the date for today for the hearing, I didn't object, even though it was the middle of the day on a weekday, because there's another planning board hearing this month that this applicant can go to. If you instruct them to go to that meeting and do this through the normal planning board and zoning mechanisms, which is what I think you should do. But what Anique said is exactly right. Instead of changing the zoning for these parcels and having all the impacts that would have on the adjacent parcels, some of whom might not want to have a neighbor that's all R5, or who might want to be included in that, if you're going to be changing zoning to do that whole, there's about five or six parcels right together, flanked by New York State property in the back and D.C. property on the side. Zoning change could make sense, but not done like this. What would make even more sense is what Anique proposed, the lot line adjustment, where you take the R5 parcels, the R5 part of the parcels, and make them R5 by moving the lot line, and put a 1.5 acre parcel together that would remain 1.5. And that could be applied for at the next planning board meeting and a special hearing on that, and a special permit for the R5 portion of those parcels, done in December, and this applicant can move forward. But if you guys try to do it this way, it's really something that I think leaves the public feeling bewildered, and it really does lead to the zoning law not holding well for us. Because it basically says if an applicant has trouble with the planning board, just referring to the town board, and the town board rezones their property. That means you don't have a zoning code anymore. It means that every time somebody needs something, that the planning, that the zoning code doesn't on its face give them easily, they come to you guys. And you guys are a political body, which means, which is a good thing in many circumstances. But there's too many pressures on a body like yours to go one way or another as the political winds blow. The planning board is supposed to follow a code that applies to everybody, and that gives us some stability of knowing when you buy a house in a residential zone, that you'll have residential activities around you. And changing it for an individual proposal like this is a last resort. And I think the zoning officer in this case made it the first resort. The discussions of this issue at those workshop meetings and planning board meetings were extremely cursory. There was not an investigation with the planning board of all the zoning categories, and could you fit into this or that, to talk with the applicant about, could they revise their plan so that it would accommodate? Would it work if you did this lot line adjustment? Those are the types of conversations that I am used to hearing and expect to hear about a proposal that is being evaluated fully by the town and its departments. And that just, that really has not happened. And it doesn't seem like it's at all fair to the public to try to do it today. There's a line in the purpose of this proposed law that says, "Help preserve larger lot sizes along Route 28." Well, that's not in keeping with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan doesn't say larger lot sizes along 28. In fact, the way Anique described the zoning is quite accurate, there's smaller lot sizes because R1.5 lots, as opposed to R5 lots, can have more activity in most cases. They don't happen to include the particular activity of this applicant, but in general, R1.5 is more intense activity is allowed. So it's moving to a more conservative zoning to make this whole parcel R5, and it's very different than what we have anywhere else along the corridor. And it is not in keeping with the comprehensive plan. So I think it's a no, and there are ways that this project can go forward that do not require this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Just for clarification, the town board had no intention of taking action on this issue today. This is just simply a public hearing on the action, or the proposed action. We were not even in consideration of taking action on the proposal itself. So that is a misnomer itself. Also, Joyce can correct me on this, I've heard reference now twice to the FOIL request. The FOIL request was received when?
Anne, when did we get that? Last week?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know where those 20 business days have transpired.
Was that stuff you're writing up on the website? Or not? Maps and all this, is it what I did today? Is that everything?
Yep.
That's been on the website since last week, in our public notices section?
More than last week.
I didn't know, I sent it to her, I didn't even, you know.
It was submitted when we submitted it to Cal, which was almost two weeks ago.
Yeah.
If, if the material...
I'm sorry, Cat.
I had my hand like before she, I'm about to run amok again. I'm Bob Calp. I've been involved in planning in this town since 1992, both on town level and on a county level. And with complaining about spot zoning, this has nothing to do with spot zoning. Spot zoning has to do with you making that lot a commercial lot in a residential area, which is not being, is not being asked for here. To their information, this is not the only lot on Route 28 that's 5 acres that comes to the lot here. Okay? So nothing wrong with what they're proposing here.
Oh, anyway, well, I was gonna say, her office has been slammed, so I had her answer the FOIL request, which was well within 30 days. And as you know, we're very forthcoming with every FOIL request. They're like instantaneously. So it's, it's up to their office when they can provide it. But yes, we did have it there, so maybe we should have told you, "Oh, it's on our website", maybe. Right?
Yes, thank you. So at the time that you received these materials and posted them to the public, Anique Taylor had an outstanding FOIL request in your...
But I received it from his office, not even knowing that was what she asked. I forwarded all her requests to her, because half the time, I don't know what's going on with the planning or zoning, that's her area.
That's fine. But the zoning office had the open request for information about this in their office, and they didn't contact Anique to tell her that she could find it on the website. I've been to the website, I would say, five times in the past week trying to find information about this. I did not find it.
Anything like that under town business, public hearings and that?
It's okay, I'm not saying that you didn't try to do, right, and I don't know why it didn't come from the zoning office. But I am saying, and Rob says, "Well, we never planned to take action on this." How in the world would the public know that?
Because there was no resolution, because there was no resolution for saying that we were going to take action. The resolutions are attached to the agenda. Resolution's there. The town board, we were well, we were not taking action on this today. Also, I have to wait, I also have to wait for county comments, which the county planning board, I sent the referral, and in talking with Rob Liebowitz, he said, again, you can't take action on the actual issue. You know, now, Seeker is a different thing, we may be able to do Seeker, or may not, but you can't take action on the actual issue until the county gets their referral. So it was referred to them immediately after our meeting here on Monday, whatever that date was, first Monday of October, and it was sent to county with the referral documents, with all this paperwork, and it was down at county. I know that Anique came into my office and asked me about some different documentation, and I said, she said that the county hadn't received it yet, and I know for a fact, it was hand-delivered to the referral officer in the county office building that first week of October. So they had the documentation down there. Now, there was no, again, no move to take an action on this today, and it was planned for the November 8th meeting. The only reason we're going to do a Seeker, the Seeker on it today, is just to get it out of the way, because we have public hearing and budget and everything else in our general business to take care of on the night. And if we were to adopt the change, we could just simply have a resolution to adopt the change, knowing this is a legal.
Well, I would encourage you to hold the action on the Seeker as well. And because I do think the applicant has the chance to go to the zoning officer and maybe get in front of the planning board and do this up an entirely different way, and then you don't have to do this, which I think is using a sledgehammer on a problem that needs a tack hammer. So this is, it's good to hear all that stuff, but there was no way the public could know it. We saw the, the public notice of, the public hearing on this, and a, you know, a refusal really to provide documentation until today is when we've gotten it. So that's, that generates the feeling that this is not being done in a way that would work for us. I appreciate the clarifications and would ask you not to do a secret determination today, because it's all still too new. People should have a chance to review it, and I would like you to keep open the ability of people to send in public comments. If you keep the public hearing open, then people who now know about it, now have a document to look at, can send in more long-form comments between now and November.
Okay, Doug, excuse me. Just one more thing, Cat. On the front page of our website, because if people can't find the special page where we put everything, public notices, when we're looking to hire people, whatever, top front on our website, I'm on a cheap drawing, says news and updates. First top one, I did October 3rd about the preliminary budget, right onto that, I posted October 3rd, Town of Shandaken Public Hearing Notices, and all this is on there with the link to the maps. It's right next to the, right, the blurb where it says "Welcome". So I mean, I don't know how much more clarified I have to be in here.
Look, I just...
It's right here.
Joyce, when I went and clicked on that, the link to go to that public hearing notice, I did not find any of those maps. So if they're there now, I don't know when they went up.
This whole thing was like a one lump sum document.
I've got the resolutions, that's my...
Perhaps the document just didn't open, all I had was the first page.
Well, it's crappy software, I know that. I work with what I've got.
FCC Revs. So there was another, and I can say that, you know, I saw the FOIL request, and the FOIL request was for meeting minutes and notifications about this action. Thing is that this was discussed in a workshop meeting. There are no meeting minutes for a workshop meeting, and there was, other than the planning board, and, Anne, correct me, other than the planning board making the recommendation, saying, "We're going to send a recommendation to the town board with a map", that's what was sent to the town board, that's what we received. That was...
That's what she was asking for, was the recommendation and the map.
That's all in there.
She never got it.
That's all we see on the website.
Mr. Jameson?
I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak. I feel like, once again, we're being bogged down in a lot of technicalities that shouldn't really have a lot of bearing on the fact that we have an opportunity... really have a lot of bearing on the fact that we have an opportunity, once again, to have another business in this town that provides recreational opportunities, which is what our economy is based on. Number of points to make. First, this is that I'm a resident of Shandaken, of Phoenisha, I'm in business in Phoenisha for 38 years, and I've seen, over the 38 years, numerous times, where we have had to deal with our zoning map, and the problems that are inherent in its original design, and...